October 20th, 2009. Let's rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have the roll call.
Counselor Olson.
Here.
Bridge.
Here.
Bender.
Here.
Mertzig.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Hendry.
Here.
Finsland.
Here.
Herrick.
Here.
McKenzie.
Here.
Dahlbeck.
Here.
Youth Counselor Nowicki is excused. Emmert and Seather.
I have just one announcement. Superior's Issues Identification Night will be October 22nd at the University Ballroom. And just want to make encourage your counselors to be there. This is where the issues are identified for our Superior Day's effort in February. So that starts at 7:00 PM. So all of you that can make it, please do so. I'll call for the approval in the minutes. Motion by Counselor Dahlbeck, second by Counselor Bender. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay. Minutes are approved. We're sprouting an awful lot of beards around here lately. Must be hunting season or something. Mr. S- any cold weather? Good cold weather. Mr. Sirk, you're sporting a new look tonight. Interesting. Good. Chose a council, mean to roll this out in? Good. The consent agenda. Motion by Counselor Finsland, second by Counselor Hendry. Any discussion? Any items you'd like pulled for discussion at a later time? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Both say nay. Item 7.1 is approved.
7.2 is a city policy requiring helmets for people under age 16 at city-operated hockey rinks.
Motion by Counselor Olson, second by Counselor Bender. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay. Item 7.1 is approved.
7.2 is a city policy requiring helmets for people under age 16 at city-operated hockey rinks.
Motion by Counselor Olson, second by Counselor Bender. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay. 7.2 passes.
7.3 is to increase the fine for dumping to $1,000 and test for one year blocking off 42nd Street just west of Albany Avenue to Badger Drive for April and May beginning in 2010.
Motion by Counselor Bridge, second by Counselor Dahlbeck. Discussion, Counselor Hendry.
Yeah, just to mention that whenever we deal with anything that deals with garbage or things that people are throwing away, that I always want to make sure that individuals have a good way of getting rid of it legally. And in this case, these are people apparently that are able to transport whatever they're dumping because they're transporting it and then dumping it. So this is just, you know, kind of reckless, you know, use of, you know, their equipment just to dump it anywhere where they could just bring it right to the dump. So I can kind of see this fine.
Counselor Bender.
Yes, thank you. Well, first of all, as you may remember, a while ago, I sponsored Before Public Works in the past on the council to have one extra day at the landfill per year. So I'm really in favor of making sure that people dump at the proper area. But I did check, and there have only been five people fined for this since 2008. So it's not a lot of people. And I think this would be something, it'd be very difficult to catch someone who's doing illegal dumping. So my question is, is this absolutely necessary? The $100 fine plus the 163 in court costs, I believe it was. So $263 fine as it sits right now.
Any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay. Okay, motion passes.
Item 8.1, the mayor is appointing Gene Till to the library board for-
Motion by Counselor Anderson, second by Counselor Bender. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. Item 8.1 passes.
9.1, Counselor Mertzig is requesting the council form a fact-finding commission to investigate the pros and cons of a fire department-operated ambulance service and suggesting the commission include individuals that can be regarded as unbiased and bipartisan in their acquisition of evidence.
Motion by Counselor Dahlbeck, second by Counselor Anderson. Any discussion? Counselor Hendry.
Yeah, I received a call on this a little while ago from an individual that was in favor of our fire department-operating ambulance service. And then I dug into it a little bit, and there seems to be some pros and cons, and it seems simple on the surface, but it seems kind of complicated once you look into it a little bit. And I think it's a good thing for us to have it investigated and to get the evidence out where we can look at it and make a decision on it. I don't, I'm not aware of it being discussed in committees, you know, that I'm aware of, maybe it has been, but I think we need to discuss either in a committee or in a venue like this, and this is probably as good a way of doing it as any other.
Counselor Olson.
I agree with you, Chuck. I believe that this is, and there's people in the audience here that I don't know if anybody signed up, but-
No.
Okay. Anyway, I would, I agree that it needs to be looked into, the fact-finding commission committee or whatever it may be. And I think the proper place, due to the fact that it will require some money, Mr. Mertzig, if we sent it to the finance committee with the intention of seeking an outside firm such as SEH, Ayers, whoever else we do things like this typically, but I would like to make a motion that it go to finance committee.
Okay, we have a precedent motion, second by Counselor Finsland. We have to vote on this motion first. Counselor Anderson, would you like to?
Well, having probably the most experience of this particular issue, at least of anybody I'm aware of in the room, having had a father who in the 1950s worked on what at that time was the Superior Fire Department ambulance. They had two ambulances at that time. They had a city ambulance and they had a county ambulance, and they were stationed at 18th Street Fire Hall back in, those of you who remember that, some of you might, some of you probably don't.
I do.
But that, you know, it, there was an ambulance service on the fire department. Then it shifted over to the county, and as you know, under state law, Douglas County is required to provide ambulance service within Douglas County, and that includes the city of Superior. You know, I received a letter in the mail about, you know, Gold Cross employees concerned about losing their job, but I have to point out that when Douglas County decided to get rid of the ambulance service back in the 70s, late 70s, early 80s, I think it was the early 80s, there were quite a number of paramedics who were union employees working for Douglas County that lost their position at that time. So I don't think I'm very much persuaded by the letter about those people losing jobs when some of my friends in those days lost their jobs when they worked for Douglas County ambulance. I've talked to Gene, and I think in this committee, you know, there's a lot of issues to talk about. There's a lot of issues to talk about. There's issues to talk about, you know, about the fire department, the size of the fire department. We're going to need more staffing if we do this, and right now, the fire department doesn't have any way to generate revenue. We have an emergency service that doesn't have a way to generate revenue. So if one thinks about it, having an ambulance service that charges a fee is one way to generate some revenue to offset the cost of that department. So I think there are issues that could and should be looked at. One of the issues might be whether we want to continue to have paramedic ambulance service. There's a lot of issues you could talk about, and I think going about it in a committee and a fact-finding commission, I think, is a good way to go. It's going to be, it's not going to be cheap to do this, so think about that, because it's not going to be inexpensive.
Counselor Mertzig, we have a motion on the floor to refer this to the finance committee. Counselor Mertzig.
Well, I have a question for you. Do you mean that we would bypass this fact-finding commission entirely and go straight to the finance and public safety, or, I guess I'm not following entirely what you're-
No, and if the council and administration would allow, I would want you to follow through with this, with this fact-finding, maybe work with the department head, whether it's Gene or the public safety or the committees themselves. But with the time and effort you've put into this in the passion that you've got for it, that I would like to see you follow up on it. The fact that it's setting it to finance committee, it will require some finances-
Right, right, clearly.
-in the end to fund the study.
Right. And I think how we're going to proceed after this, where it's going to go, obviously it would go to finance, and then it would go to public safety, and they would throw it back and forth. But again, my intention, like you said, Counselor Anderson, is just to investigate the pros and cons. You know, at this point, we don't have any information either way, so I think this is important that we go down this road.
I'd like to support Counselor Olson's motion and Mr. Finsland's second, because actually, it'll end up at the finance committee anyways, because it needs to have a thorough financial analysis, and it would be really foolish to bypass a mechanism the council has set up called the finance committee, which this is a major expenditure. This would be the place, both sides could air, we could hire a study. The hands of the finance committee are not tied. They can go in whatever direction they feel is to best investigate this entire situation. So Counselor Bridge, are you turning your light off?
I changed my mind.
Okay. Counselor Anderson?
Well, I just had one, had one thing. Now, this is, obviously, this, we're having the same issue in Duluth. Same issue is coming up at about the same time. Right now, we have an ambulance service that transits state lines. Gold Cross is both in Duluth and Minnesota. I don't see any reason, and maybe there is, maybe there isn't, under state laws, that if the fire departments in their respective cities of Duluth and Superior decided to do this, that there couldn't be some sort of joint operation. We're doing it now with Gold Cross as a private company. I don't know why in the world members of the International Association of Firefighters from two different departments couldn't, couldn't work together to create a joint ambulance service for the Duluth Superior metropolitan area.
This has been done at the firefighting level as well in other communities.
Right. So I mean, I think maybe this is an opportunity for us to broaden our horizons, if you will. Let's think out of the box, let's just not think about the city of Superior, but we also have to consider Douglas County, because you can't throw the county out in this mix. The, you know, the ambulance service still has to provide service to the county. But maybe it's time to think about those bridges as being opportunities instead of barriers.
Mr. Mertzig.
You bring up a good point, and my question would be, how do we go about selecting individuals to participate on this commission?
It's called the finance committee. It is-
Well, right, but what I would like to see happen is, since the county clearly would, there would be an impact for the county, Duluth, maybe it would be a good idea to have somebody from the county board on this, and then the Duluth City Council possibly, you know what I'm saying? How are we going to hash out, are we leaving it up to the finance committee and the public safety committee to determine who's on these, on this commission, or how are we going to go about that?
Let me explain how the committee process works here in the city of Superior.
Well, I'm aware-
Is, these people are smart counselors who know how to attack a subject or take on an issue and fully, and use whatever assets and resources they need to fully look into the ambulance service. So I have full trust in the finance committee to make sure that they do a proper job. Okay, Counselor Dahlbeck.
I would just like to add what, add to Counselor Erickson's comments. Our firefighters respond. What did I say? Oh, I'm sorry, Ed. I'm sorry. But our firefighters go out every day, and are first responders, and they do at least 350 medical runs a month, sometimes more, sometimes less, but they do respond first, and they are there to provide the medical care. So I think this is a good, good start to look into this.
Okay. Counselor Bridge. Counselor Bridge.
We've had subcommittees set up from within our committee structure on a number of occasions, and the commission could be somewhat of a subcommittee, whether it was from finance or public safety.
Exactly.
I guess I don't, I don't have a preference, but I guess at this point, I also do believe that if it's going to go to finance, it might as well go to public safety, even if it's just a standing committee item that really doesn't make any progress until after finance is through with it, because they might, you know, have some valuable input at that point. So I would like to see that added to the motion if the motioners are agreeable to-
Are the motioners agreeable to add the public safety to the-
Oh, sure. You know, and I would like to find us a way to, you know, to maybe have a discussion with the Duluth City Council about this also. And maybe it does require some sort of a joint committee to be formed to look at this issue. And, you know, how, we've done that before, where we've, we already have the city-county committee still in existence, so we already have a committee structure for issues to deal with, with the county. We don't have one right now with Duluth, but we have met with Duluth city councilors in the past, and maybe it's time that we have another joint session like we had last fall with the Duluth City Council.
In talking with Duluth representatives, it would require a state law change for them to make these changes, and they're talking, they think it'll be about three to five years to be able to affect those state law changes. It's much different in Wisconsin, we don't have that hurdle right now.
Well, the point is that we could start the ball rolling if that's the way we want to go, and so it never hurts to talk about that, and laws are made by people, so that means they can be changed, so.
Counselor Olson.
Well, first, we need to move to amend the rules to allow a council to speak more than twice.
Yeah, we've, I agree. We need to quit having counselors carry on a dialogue in it that isn't the, unless there's the approval of this-
Just amend the rule.
Okay, your second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Counselor Olson.
I would like to amend my motion to not only, I am going to do it again, though. To not only to refer to finance committee and public safety committee, but to have Counselor Mertzig head up a subcommittee for both of those committees and bring those, who you would feel would be the appropriate people to be on those committees, to bring forth to both the public safety and the finance committee.
I don't know if we've ever had a motion that takes jurisdictional power away from a committee. This is the first. I respectfully disagree with Mr. Olson. That's taking away the power of duly-elected members of the finance committee, unless you want to do that. Counselor Finsland.
Yeah, I wouldn't second that motion, and I wouldn't withdraw my second in that case. I would second a motion that would include the public safety committee, but I would not second one that would give, empower one counselor to appoint committee members other than the president of the council.
Counselor Bender.
I just wanted to remind Counselor Mertzig that he is certainly welcome to attend the finance committee meeting and the public safety meeting and have input at both those, so there's a good invitation.
Well, thanks, and I wouldn't expect-
Counselor Mertzig, I recognize you to speak next.
Thank you.
I have to stay in charge of this meeting, so-
I understand.
Thank you.
I wouldn't want the sole responsibility of picking the committee members, because I want this to be something that, like I said, we're investigating the pros and cons, and I don't want the committee to be stacked. People have agendas, unfortunately, but this is just to look at the facts, and so I trust that those people will be picked, you know, by what they know and what they can bring to the table.
Yeah, we do have ordinances, as you know, Counselor, on special committees, that there are certain rules-
Right, I haven't read them word for word, but I'm aware they're out there, right?
Yes. Counselor Bridge.
Perhaps I missed something, it wouldn't be the first time, but it seems to me we're contemplating a vote on something that's already passed?
No, we're still-
Is this separate issue?
We're actually debating a second motion that was made to simply refer this to the finance committee. It's been amended to refer to the finance and public safety, and then the first motioner changed his mind and added that Mr. Mertzig could head these two committees, which by the way would violate our city ordinance on special committee rules. And, but if you want to do that, we can argue about it later.
We had a high vote on this agenda item.
No.
At at least one level here.
No, we have not.
No, no, we haven't voted on it yet.
Have not.
What did we vote on?
We didn't vote on anything.
We haven't voted on it yet.
We had the second or-
We voted on suspending the rules, Tom. I think the rules will constitute a topic more than twice.
Okay, we have, I have to find out first if Mr. Olson is going to agree with his second or that this be referred to finance and public safety.
Yes, I will.
Okay. Counselor Hendry, thank you. Thank you, Counselor Olson.
Well, I think you just, you just took care of my comment. I was just going to mention that, that I'm definitely in favor of it being referred to finance and public safety, but I don't think that any additional strings should be attached to it. And just, you know, just to mention that if any, any issue of interest to me that's ever come up in a committee that I don't sit on, I feel free in coming in and sitting and listening and participating in the discussion. I've never had any, any problem at all with, you know, not being able to voice my opinions and, you know, to have them seriously taken.
Thank you. Counselor Anderson.
Well, just to explain the process that will likely happen at the finance committee, because we've done all of these issues before. If we feel that there's issues that we aren't able to explore adequately, which there may, certainly there will be, then, you know, then we would have the freedom to make recommendations to the council, for example, to hire an outside consultant, for example, would be one thing to do, or, you know, refer it somewhere else for some further study, or, you know, we certainly aren't going to go about this in any kind of a, in a way that's in any way tainted. I think our committee structure, I think, in this city, I've been very proud to serve on the committees in this, in this city, and, you know, even though we have differences of opinion, Mayor Ross, sometimes we, you know, we all still pretty much stick with the facts, and I think together we've made some good decisions. I don't see where this issue will be any different.
Counselor Mertzig.
Well, I guess, I thought of one additional thing to add to this, that we establish some type of timeline to, so this doesn't, it's not a thing that gets pushed on for months. Maybe we could make a 60-day or a 90-day timeline for having the results of this investigation available.
Are the motioners agreeable to a timeline?
No, I think that-
Okay, Counselor Finsland.
I think we should call the question on this and make the referral, and if there is additional motions following that, then I think we should deal with those separate, those motions separately.
Okay. There's been a motion to call for a question, which we must do. All in favor say aye. Both say nay. This item has been referred to the finance committee and public safety. Yep. Counselor Finsland, he has his mic off, but he did say now we could have additional motions, so.
So I would like to make a motion to create a timeline for this. I think it would be fair to say three months would be adequate time to accumulate the evidence that we're looking for, either pro or con.
Okay, there's the motion, second by Mr. Bender, that the finance committee and public safety report back to this council within 90 days of this date. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Both say no. Motion passes.
Item 9.2 is the finance committee, August 13th, recommendation to approve Kevin Peterson's request for a sewer credit in the amount of $262.88.
Motion by Counselor Bender, second by Olson and Bender, okay. Motion by Counselor Olson, second by Counselor Bender. Any discussion? Counselor Anderson, and then Counselor Bender, Counselor-
Well, we have, we at the finance committee hammered out the policy that we intend to use now for the city of Superior when it comes to these sewer credits. Bottom line is, we're not paying them anymore. That's it. We made the decision this last, this last committee meeting that we will no longer pay sewer credits to water that has actually gone into our sewer system, which requires our treatment. That's going to be our policy, if I'm not mistaken. That's our, that is now our policy. Now, since Mr. Peterson is actually advocating for other people, and our policy at the time was probably to honor that, I will agree that this time we will honor that, and Mr. Peterson was at the meeting, and he knows the policy now that we've decided that nobody's going to get these from now on. And so that's, thanks to Mr. Peterson, and even though he was a bit unkind to me the last time he talked, I'll, I'll accept that we'll pay him this time.
Counselor Bender.
No, I forgot what I was going to say. No, no, not, not really. And I should add, at the finance committee, I was the one who, who made the motion that we should have this, just have one policy. It's either going to be paid or don't pay it, and I said, let's make it, don't pay it for everyone and go with that. However, I will agree with what Ed has said, this should be grandfathered in, and I think we've probably discussed this ad nauseam, so I would like to call for the question at this time and ask for a roll call vote.
Okay, we'll call for the question. Mr. Peterson can speak to this after the motion. Question's been called for, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. Item one, no.
Oh, it was a roll call vote. I requested a roll call vote.
Oh, you want a roll call vote, okay. This has probably become the most famous sewer credit in the history of the city of Superior.
Counselor Olson.
Yes.
Bridge.
No.
Bender.
Yes.
Mertzig.
Yes.
Anderson.
No.
Hendry. Finsland. Herrick.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Dahlbeck.
No.
Six-four. Motion passes. I'm trying to figure where to put you, and you want to speak at the end or right now to this issue?
We may keep talking about this issue.
Uh, we're done, it's been, it's-
We're done, but can I take a turn from Mr. Peterson's speaking?
Very good. I'll take that recommendation from the council. Mr. Peterson, you have three illustrious minutes.
Well, I won't, I won't, uh, I thought about doing a PowerPoint last time I was here. I do think-
You get 20 minutes if you do a PowerPoint, you know.
I would have had a call.
Kevin, turn to right now.
Identify yourself.
My name's, you should know by heart now, Kevin Peterson. This is, you take a little bit of my thunder away, Ed, because I was going to request the credit. So I do appreciate you doing it. I don't think that the new policy has anything to do with the old policy, but it would be, it would simplify it if, if in fact that's in effect now. And as Mr. Mertzig pointed, perhaps I should have asked for a 90-day timeline when I started out, because it's been about nine months for a $250 credit, but it was truly my intention that, that it seemed clear to me, I wasn't looking for a street fight, and if any, hopefully the good will come of it, it'll clarify this in the future for, for other items, so I appreciate your time on the matter. Thanks much.
Well, I'll bet you, Kevin, we'll see you back on other things.
Next time, as I apologize to Dave, I forgot to wear my purple jacket today, so-
Oh, hey, listen, I wear my purple on St. Urho's Day, so for us Fins.
Thank you, brother.
Um, yeah, well, half Norwegian, half Finn. Counselor McKenzie, I don't know where you're going in here.
Is it okay to comment to-
Uh, the motion is settled.
About Peterson?
Yeah. We, let me just give a suggestion, and it's not, one of the things we're trying to do is establish protocol, is not to respond to those who speak to the council at large, and once we start that, then we get into a dogfight, so it's best to speak to an issue, not to a person. Just nice protocol. I'll bet you there was plenty speaking in the committee, I'll bet you, yes.
Ready?
Oh, yeah. Resolutions, number 10.
10.1 is a resolution approving a cooperation agreement with the redevelopment authority in connection with C&amp;C Holdings of Duluth LLC and AMI Consulting Engineers P.A.
Second. Counselor Dahlbeck, second by Counselor Anderson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. 10.1 passes.
10.2 is a resolution introduced by the Community Development Division, setting a public hearing for December 1st at 6:30 in the Government Center for the 2010 Community Development Block Grant Action Plan.
Motion by Counselor Herrick, second by Counselor Bender, and Mr. Sirk would like to say two words on the subject. to say two words on the subject.
Two words, that's it.
You're done. Motion.
Just in front of you, I passed out the, we're trying to be a little greener here at the suggestion of Mayor Ross to put these action plans, because if you remember right, they were big, they're stacked, so we will have paper copies available for the public. Just wanted to let you know that if you have any questions about this, make sure you give me a call, if you have any suggestions. These activities here are based on, the first page is based on our recommendations to you for, and some outside entities for allocation, and then the second page is public service activity, which Counsel Herrick sits on, is the recommended budget from the CDBG Advisory Committee, which is going forward. So if you have any questions, make sure you give me a call, and I'd be more than happy to answer them. You have from now until December first to let me know. Thanks.
You might not recognize Mr. Sirk, you know. Mr. Hendry.
Yeah, just a question, will these discs work on all the computers that have been issued to us by the city of Superior?
They, they should, Counsel Hendry, but if not, I will be happy to get you a paper copy or something else, what you need.
Okay, fine.
That goes for everybody.
We've issued blank ones to some, so. You know, that's right, Counsel Anderson had a good suggestion, there'd be a test to see if you've looked at it, so. We have a motion on the floor, all in favor say aye.